Okay, today I had a request to add a budget work session to discuss the current year budget that we're in, I believe. I guess just to start it out, just to let you know, the budget was an approved balanced budget that started in January, July 1st. As of right now, we're still operating on that existing budget with the increases. As you can see in the report, mainly all the current items are running as anticipated each year. Until we get kind of bothering the budget, we don't know. Probably in the December-January timeframe, we'll start working on next year fiscal budget. There was a line item that was placed into the budget for capital projects. Through my understanding, I don't think anything has been spent. And that's what I'm looking for right now. There was $200,000 budgeted in transport to community center. On page 23, it's $200,000 that was put in for the raisins and the meal tax. And as you see, none of it's been spent. We have not gone forward, we're still in the waiting process for the possible project. And I guess I'll open up the questions that we have on the budget.
Ask that question again, Mike.
I was asking if there was any questions with the current budget we're in. That we will begin, I'll be working in January, I mean December.
You're watching and calling me.
In December for the... So is there any questions about the existing budget, where we're at, what we're looking at in the next few months? This budget will end in June of 2018.
So you're saying like that the excess from, I know we agreed this year, like for the $1,500 paid for the water. I guess that was the question, is that extra going into that? The line item you were talking about just a minute ago, $200,000?
$200,000, is that a part, okay, when we did the one and a half percent, how much was that total? I don't know. Like 340,000?
Yes, about 320,000 is one and a half percent.
So we do have about $200,000 after all the raisins and everything?
Well, we did the raisins, we did the other things. I was looking to make sure, we did that once the budget, I did scrape in order to add the other raisins in. The raisins will be able to be taken back out and put into this upcoming. My understanding, the additional $1,500 we're looking at will be in the July 1 budget of this upcoming year. Is what was proposed the last time, okay? So when we start working a budget, I'll go ahead and build that into the budget.
End this anticipation.
Anticipation, that will be the question, yes, okay? And that was the intent, that was, I believe, the vote of this council as far as what to do with the existing... Any upcoming raises? We'll just, Mr. Preston, do you have something? Wait, wait on.
Yes, sir, all right, ready, been here all day.
Just trying to pull up our existing budget, the comments.
I'm gonna give you a shout out, the council made the mic, they're taking care of the water. There had to be 500,000 gallons that ran out that past month.
Last time we called, we went up there and...
Did you see how much water, did they tell you how much water that did?
We were actually, we looked at the yard and we stopped there. We tested it, it's water. So Mike's wife came out and she was telling us that there's more up in the woods.
Did you see that ditch on the other side of the driveway left where all that water's going into?
There was a, actually that line is not in our system. Whenever that line was put in, it's a four inch line that ran up that...
Little road.
Little road going through there, it was not on our map and so we would have never went up there.
Oh, I know, I mean that's something that probably up there for 50...
It had a four inch bank and it was leaking in two spots. And it's funny, that's not funny, but ductile iron. And the way it works is when it had a rock in it, well ductile iron, it will shear. It looks like you took an oil cutter to it. Whereas most of the times, plastic, a lot of times it will split, it will go the length of the pipe. So if you have a 20 foot joint, it will crack and split all of the hood. But that had two cuts. So that wall's been leaking, it would help us with, you know, we've been actually in the last couple of months, been out riding at night, testing to see if we could find water leaks. Our water accountability has been low, we have been losing quite a bit of water. So hopefully this is one that's going to do, to make some, because when we first went up there, you know, Pete's been here 30 some years. And we lived on that, it wasn't, we don't even know how the line got there. Pete only remembered everybody.
Did you see how much water was coming out of that?
A lot.
It was unbelievable.
A lot for a long period of time. I have, and I wish I could. Send it to you. That I've been working on. The actual water is like, they take an excavator, they dig it out, and they dig it out, they have a cover pipe. But in a gutter, I think, so they're working over the rock and then the pipe, it would shoot up. About 15 feet in the air, in a circle like this.
Now, can you cut that pipe closer to his house so it doesn't, you don't have to go back up there?
Well, they were supposed to be like today in market in, determining where it went. There's a river, we don't know where it's...
Was it just an anticipation that was gonna kind of grow that they were...
No.
Pick out the states, when you go on the second exit or on the second entrance, pick out the states. Coach Booper's dad, you know where he lives? You go up to his house and when you pass his driveway, it's city limits.
End.
End. But there's two houses back there, it's a big open yard, it's Mike Patton's house, he bought from Rusty Skews. And there's just like a, his driveway goes like this, and when you keep on going, there's just a dirt road that goes up to the woods. And then it goes up there, there's nothing, just big old valleys. And that's where it was coming from. I was like, dude, this is coming from nowhere, this doesn't make any sense.
It's been running.
But how do you, how do you figure out, is there any way we can do the monitor stuff like that? Because that's a ton of water every day. That'd be ridiculous, I don't...
You, when it comes to water loss, okay? The way that they calculated water loss was?
Probably did.
Mike, I don't want to be hurt, I'm sorry.
I know.
In the area, I didn't know where you were talking about just now. Mr. Spangler, P T Spangler, well, that property out there. I mean, all of that big dust was saved. And I would say that probably he's one, because that area was not annexed then. So I'm assuming that that's, he probably put it in.
Yeah. I mean, a four inch fire was there, put there for a reason, for future development. They have to do a lot of work to know that.
It had to be pretty old, because one, it's ductile iron, and two, we don't put in four inch lines anymore over mains. Four inch mine, four inch main, you're not supposed to put a fire control. Supposed to be a six inch or higher in order to install a fire control. So it had to be 20, 30 years ago when it was placed in. The, but when you're talking about monitoring our system, the way that the water plant operates now is we have, we have a meter account that we send out for billing. And then at the end of each month, we have a billing volume that we give. Well, that compared to the production amount of the plant. The plant determines how much it produces, pumps in line, the meters tell you how much you bill for, it's all of water.
How much is the loss, 10%?
Usually you get into, anything under, over 20%, the Virginia Department of Health wants you to develop a plan for loss. So, I mean, we've been as bad as 35, 40% at one time, okay? And some of the issue was that, with that loss, is we go two months with a bad reading and one month makes a difference. And that's based on billing, okay? They tighten up our billing some, so they're going out one time, but there, it takes three weeks to read the meters. Well, it won't improve this, but by the time you read the meters in three weeks, the first guy's one week, two weeks off from the last guy. So when you are shooting billing out and comparing the volume numbers, you can't compare your volume numbers, so you're always behind. You're always behind a certain percentage.
Yeah, because you're always there with your guys.
What we're looking, we're hoping to do with this capital improvement project, this staff is looking at, is trying to do a force account, which a force account is, they put the money in an account, and we can pull out that account to pay for expenses. And the reason why we're gonna do this is, you know, we can use in-house labor, cut it cost them half by one thing. There's something we don't have expertise at, okay? Laying a water line out of a college, that's where we can probably save some money on this project. Instead of being a 1.9, we'll go back and we, we're trying to work in, getting about, about the $600,000 taken off this project, and then we want to look at zoning our water into different zones and doing new meters.
And do you know how to hold any streets lined?
Lined, no.
Yeah.
No, what we do is, you know, it's, we replace lines based on media, okay? To give you an idea, this summer, we just finished it up on Mary Street, which is one way street, it's got just a few houses on it, about six houses, but we've been up there four or five times in the last year to fix it. And it had a, I think a one inch, maybe a three quarter inch line running down through it. So we take it out to a six inch line, we tie it on the top of Mary Street to where it goes in at Virginia Avenue. Maybe on a loop, so that when you cut somebody off, when you cut something off to work on it, you have another way to think about it.
Got you.
But we're hoping to map all of our system, and we have them mapped in, but it's about 15 years old. So we're gonna pay somebody to come in and map our entire system, and they will be able to determine where we want master meters. Well, to give you an idea, you can do a drive-by radio read.
The Brooklands doesn't want a half a day? I'm just saying there are meters there in the whole town too.
If you can, I can read probably the town, if I went into a drive-by system, and there's a purse each one. But right now, we have a lid to lid, look down, type in the number, and go to the next one. Or we have a touch one, if they can touch the top of the lid, do it. And we don't use the touch one a lot, okay? Because a lot of the old meters that we have are... The, and the funny part about old meters is, is they benefit the customer, not the town. They are the old meters that have a bill in its bins, and they will not pick up loads of water. So if you have something that drips a little bit, or you have a little leak, or something like that, a lot of times, it'll hit a real old meter and show up. So you're also losing some of the customers. So what happens is, is the individual paying the bill is getting frustrated, we're producing water, and the water loss is a lot because we're losing water. But if you do the drive-by, it will allow you to fill out a state kicking area. And if you put a master meter in and you can section off that whole area, we will be able to read that one area, take a reading to get an end of it, and tell if there's any loss within the area.
We definitely need that.
So it's a way, and plus, you get your billing down to an art. You know, you're billing one time for all customers. Like, right now, is, if they read your meter on the first day of month, well, it's actually, we go out, I think around 10, um, somewhere around that area, but the person that's reading the first week is three weeks before he gets his bill. So then when you get your bill out, you're getting another 30 days. So you're 30 to 60 days before you can think about cutting something off. So if you get into a longer time period between, and I tell you another thing that we're doing now, that we're switching, is we're taking our, we're paying our water customers first, okay? And like, if you look at all your water bills, you get a water bill, you got a water bill and a trash bill. You've got this water bill and you got 12 trash bills. Well, the water bill is set in our system to pay first, trash is second. So first we come in, they pay their trash bill, they tell them to pay my watering. So they pay their water bill and leave the trash bill. And they get the water turned back on, or whatever they do. Well, then we go to that, and we can't cut the water off with the trash. So we're gonna switch it, so whatever bill comes in, that it takes off your first bill first. So if you come in, if I send a check in the same month, water bill, I'm paying my trash bill first and water is second. When I had the opportunity to talk with local municipality, they do that on their taxes, or any type of bill. They collect it last, because you get somebody to turn the water back on, but you can't get somebody to pay another bill that they have. So we're looking, we're hoping to do that over again.
A lot of people pay their trash upfront for the years though, or is that just something they take away?
No, it's usually tied on your bill, we don't have many. Now, the, now your taxes, we have a system set up that you can make monthly payments to the mains, and then in the year, tap account, that's awesome.
That water tank behind Grand High Street, is it still up on the hill?
Yes.
Is that for us, or is that?
Yes.
How many gallons is that?
A million gallons.
So that's a day worth of water.
Yes, well, a little bit, a little bit more, but also you have Robert that has...
And you had that old one, we were talking about that property, is still up on the hill, is that used?
No, all the tanks that the town owns are no longer there. We took down the one in, there was two tanks in downtown, and there was a tank out in West Green. One in West Green, we sold to someone.
Where's that at? Up there around Ridge's?
It's at, behind the...
You're exactly right.
So that's not ours, but like I said, every, every year, we tackle something.
Is that water replenished every day, or is that something that's holding there for months, when there's stagnant waters out there?
No, the water is, well, we have to do sampling every day of all, well, every week we do sampling, send it off and make sure, and then there's different things to test for. The, the water that's, you know, it's hickory hills pumped up through the water pump, they're hot and pot. They pump it, depends on the water loss, to 800, 900,000 gallons per day. They pump it up, and then hopefully, we can produce that much by night. You know, 10, 11 o'clock at night, we can use the pump that was, then we shut the plant down, and they're coming in water. Our chief operator, he has a phone, and it will tell you if there is a quick draw. Like, say, if a line shears like that, it will tell you that, hey, this thing is broken. And we've been looking for lakes, but, you know, they're a lot harder to find, and sometimes they don't show up. Sometimes they go down and they, yeah, they get into, and we had one in that exact same area there that was going into a sewer line. It had broke, it was going into the sewer line.
You should all lose the water.
Well, they're treating, you're paying the tree, you're treating the tree for water. So, but then what happens when you have those lakes, the guys go out in the middle of the night, when it's quieter, and they do everything from the correlator, or they would use megaphones, listen to it. There's a lot that goes into this every day. It's kind of interesting how the, it's a never-ending battle.
Oh, I know, I mean, my buddies work for some of those authorities and stuff, and they gotta check it every two hours. Water quality, I guess, when they're not in the city limits and all this country.
Mike, I want to make a comment about water, okay? Another person on town council had $5,500 a year budget for water line replacement. It was that way for several years. Now, I can't tell Pete's thing, I said, Pete, we're gonna get better, we're gonna get better. Sometimes he would repair a water leak, three weeks later, it would be a leak to three feet from where you're just repairing it. So now, what we're doing, what you're doing is replacing it, so. We've come a long way, and also, a lot of problems we've had, one of our town managers back many years ago, really didn't keep very good mapping. Mr. Lander Pickland, he's a municipal town manager, Zumi knows him. But you put lines in, nobody knew anything about it, and we're trying to find it, so I think we've come a long way.
Is there, when you put in lines, I see there's some places, there's lines or spots that you gotta re-dig stuff up, like sidewalks and things. Do you have any places where you don't have to do that type of work? You know, you just better, you know, least...
Well, one of the, you gotta remember, you put everything in right away. So if it's Bell Street, you usually have sidewalks from right away to right away, or you would have to off for a road. But you also have all the other, you have gas, sewer, water, some electric, and all these places. And then there's separation, you gotta have it.
What are the new pipes, are they like pegs pipes?
We use plastic.
Like the pegs?
Well, no, it's a, it's a C900. It doesn't mean a whole lot, but it's a, it's a plastic pipe, they have a slip to get the fitting, so then we use a navel lug in order to keep them together, and clamp those sides together to it.
Real quick, back to the budget.
All right, the force water recovery.
I don't have the three minutes.
Thankfully, I was getting ready to say, we did get the two minutes.
Ten minutes are out there.
You got a timeline?
Yeah, well, sorry.
Six thirty.
Thanks for going over that one.
I didn't know that.
Who'd you say?
I don't know about you, it's, oh, no, it's that one.
Anyway, I think there's some interesting, yeah, no, go ahead, sir. Some interesting questions, and maybe we ought to have a discussion on this, and, you know, the questions you guys have, write them down, so we can answer, okay? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The only thing I've, once I started digging through here, this is my question. The budget is set for the year, the year-to-date, the month, the balance, if there's a negative balance on there?
Which one?
U O B, I would straight to recreation.
All right.
The overtimes, will that balance out, or have we already blown it? Paige?
I don't think you can blow this during the year.
Well, I just want numbers taken.
Excuse him, our new town manager, the last six months he worked, he did nothing but map. We told him to map our water lines, sewer lines, so how, how did that get?
It must be good that on file, I mean, it'll be all right.
It wasn't very good. Okay, Mike, let's, let's get the latest question answered.
Okay, you got your first two months of your overtime, you usually, you know, during the summer months, you have the overtime. I'd have to look and see what the salary overtime is.
So then we'll probably wash out.
Usually what happens is, and I'm just, I'll give you an example, all of us.
Right.
We have full-time, part-time employees. Usually if we have less part-time employees, that's less wages with which we pay salary employees, full-time employees do it. So depending on when you lose somebody or paying somebody, then we'll return your overtime out, okay? It usually works out, so that all your overtime, at the end, if you add your regular overtime, part-time, and part-time overtime together, depending on events and the things that goes on, those type of things.
Sure. Well, I'm sorry. Just real quick, the adult softball.
Okay, that has been on there for years, it's just because of, it was the...
What are we using?
Wait, the same, we used to have adult softball.
Right.
We used to...
It's $6,000, and we've already spent $624.
Actually, we spent $1,800.
Were you, $1,800 for the adult softball?
This is used for other things up in the park, like Little League, or, you know, adult softball went away, probably 10 years.
Agreed, and that's what caught my eye, like...
And we might need to rename this, and we need to rename it what it is. I did purchase some things for Little League this year. And I think that shows off us, his past budget up at the Red Park. It could possibly...
Well, I think we're gonna run out of time, so I think we should do another one here in like a month or two.
Well, if you'd like to, we can schedule a long period of time. I didn't think of any questions we have about the budget or the way the budget operates.
Okay, all right, we're supposed to be at 6:30, we're gonna have the Hurt and Profit Engineering. Gentlemen, what this is, they can give a presentation, and you have your engineering services. Okay, services here, you write down the points you think are...
Okay, that, I thought we were gonna go, I don't care if it seemed disruptive, but come out here. If you'd like, I can try to give you more explanation for it. The two engineering firms are going to be doing a presentation to be the engineers to lay for it to do the capital improvement project for the water plant, okay, and the water system. There is a score sheet here in front of us, about 50 points, there's two, two different firms that are going to, do a presentation as far as these things, look at the categories, write on the tournament domain.
This is making, like, who's gonna choose?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
This has to be done in whatever way it's going to be. So once everybody fills these out, we will have everyone turn in, and then I'll tally them, and then we'll vote to approve it. Ready?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, we'll get started. My name is Dennis Amos, I'm the director of municipal engineering for Hurt and Profit at our Blacksburg office. This is Matt Gross, he is our project manager there, and in the municipal group as well. So we're gonna take just a few minutes to let you know kind of what we offer, what we bring to the table, and then we want to leave some time at the end for question and answer. Hurt and Profit is 100% employee-owned, we've been that way for many years. The company has been in business for almost 50 years. Some of you may remember Anderson and Associates. We were, the Blacksburg office was a part of Anderson and Associates, and January 1 of this year, we merged with Hurt and Profit. So that transition has went really smooth, and we have a lot more services that we can provide to you now that we merged with Hurt and Profit. So we will discuss those and let you know what those services are and how we can better serve the town. We have offices in Withfield, Blacksburg, Roanoke, and Lynchburg. Matt and I are both out of the Blacksburg office, and we would really appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the town in the future. And if we do move forward, we'll be serving you out of our Blacksburg office. We have 133 employees, 21 licensed civil engineers, 15 licensed land surveyors, 10 licensed environmental scientists. So we have a lot of in-house services that we provide, and again, we'll go over those in more detail as the presentation moves forward. Jessica Liljohn is our vice president of engineering services in the Blacksburg office. I report directly to her. Again, my name is Dennis Amos, and this is Matt Gross. Matt will be the main point of contact for the town if we are privileged enough to move forward with it. So with that being said, I'm gonna let Matt go over some of our projects and services.
Well, this is just a brief overview of some of the water projects we've done over the last couple of years. It's very, along the lane, along projected waterline replacements, water treatment plant improvements, disinfection byproduct studies, and evaluation, how we can help to eliminate those in the distribution system. We're just gonna skip over a lot of this. This'll be in the handout that you can peruse more at your leisure and at a later time. We have a lot of funding agency experience, I don't know how much that's gonna be appropriate to you, because the town of Bluefield likes to self-fund some of these projects and not go to external. But we, I wanted to show this, that we're very familiar with meeting all the funding agency requirements, working with them to get money available, and one of the nice new features that Hurt and Profit brought to the table is, they have a full-time grant writer that just works on getting grants. She's very familiar with all of the processes, she came from the public sector to work with us, and that's all she does, is work on getting grants for people. The scope of services that we're looking at for most projects are the B E R and environmental assessments, that's generally the first phase of developing a project. We completed the one for the water treatment plant last year, and that's already been approved by the health department. If you wanted to go to external funding, this would be the time to do that, you could go to that, or we could just move directly to the design phase. Follow, after the design, you go to bidding, following bidding, you go to construction. One of the things that we're very proud of is we generally do a lot of cost control budgeting. We like to work with the owner, we like to do detailed research and field surveys, to make sure that what we're designing is going to be the most cost-effective way to try and resolve your issues. We have a lot of experience in-house, but we do a lot of internal reviews with other project teams reviewing, reviewing the design work ideas, so that there's two sets of eyes looking at it to make sure everything, not only is it gonna meet the goal, but you can also build the damn thing. Too often, in some cases, you'll get somebody who will design something, and then try and figure out, how do I build this while keeping something operating? You need to be able to keep everything operating while you're doing that, and that can be some of the most intricate parts of a design project. And we have a lot of experience doing that. One of the things we work on a lot are water treatment plants. We do a lot of pump replacements for older water treatment plants, we've worked on a lot of expansions for facilities. One of the most recent projects I worked on, right, was just converting a water treatment plant from chlorine, gaseous chlorine, to hydrochloride, because of the environmental issues involved with storing gas chlorine. Backup power, there are a lot of water treatment plants that were built, and that would never were built to provide a backup generator. In today's climate, that can be more and more of an issue, to make sure that you can still provide power to produce water, as we get more derogations, superstorms, whatever they call it, when you have, you might have to deal with extended power outage, it's nice to be able to say, our plant is still online, we're still making water, your customers can still do it. Don't have to worry about that with everything else that's going on. We develop a lot of wells for people. We do wellhouses, we do pitless units, we've done chemical treatment at Berg's Wells, waterline projects, both extensions, fire protection, maintenance replacement, the town has a really good history of doing a lot of their own line replacements and upgrades their lines, so that they don't have to worry about that. If they have a problem with a little line that they have, I heard mentioned earlier, you realize that three weeks earlier, they fixed it in a different section, just replace the line. And we're very familiar with both the grants and the process to aid you if you need assistance in that. What else can we do for you? We'll turn this back over to Dan.
All right.
I got it going.
Yeah, that's all right. Transportation needs, we have an in-house transportation department that can help you address your transportation needs. We do both urban and rural roadways, we also have railroad capability, so, and again, as Matt said earlier, we will be leaving you with a handout that has this very presentation on it, so all the information that we're going over, we're going over pretty quickly tonight, and in the hopes that we'll have some time for some question and answers, so we can really dig into what the town would like to know, but this information we'll be leaving with you, so you can look at it later on. Traffic analysis, traffic impact studies, capacity analysis, all of this we can offer in-house, and one of the main advantages of that, when you work with Hurt and Profit now, there were a lot of these services that before, we had to, we had to go out of house to offer to you. So now, we have all this in-house, kind of a one-stop shop, if you will. Your point of contact will be the same for these projects, so Matt will be handling those responsibilities. Dam inspections, dam breach analysis, if that's a service that you need, we have that in-house now as well, so that, again, is something that we didn't offer before, but now we do, so we're really excited to be able to, be able to offer these things to the town.
I'll skip my head in here for a second. If the town ever decided that wanted to put the reservoir back online, we would be able to do the in-house evaluation for what's gonna need to be bringing it back up to its code.
Surveying, we have, as we mentioned before, numerous licensed surveyors and field crews in-house, both out of Withfield, Blacksburg offices, so we can get down here and handle your survey needs in a timely manner. High-definition surveying, we have a three D laser scanner, those things are really, really on the, on the upswing, they offer a lot of benefits, especially to complex projects. If you have a water treatment plant piping gallery, or a pump station that you need detailed information on, you can set this thing up in there, let it do its thing, and it generates point cloud that basically resembles a three D photo, but the good thing about it is, every point in there is surveyed very accurately, so...
Which means you can even tell where conduits are on walls, let alone pipe dimensions, bolt locations on your pipes?
Very useful tool.
Especially when you're upgrading and improving existing facilities.
Three D laser scanner flyovers, here's, here's an example of an area where the three D scanning was used in a larger type area. This is one of our A T P projects where we have a transfer station, you can kind of see that there in the background. It's a little difficult to see on your screen there, but that is, again, a very powerful and useful tool that we have available. G I S, we have a lot of clients for G I S, we host a lot of folks' websites, they're G I S sites. We've been successful in working with localities to not only do the whole website, but also in the collection of the data. One of our clients, not far up the road, here at Towne-Harrisburg, we actually rented our handheld GPS unit to them, they didn't have one. So, instead of them buying one, they asked if they could rent ours, so we let them rent our unit. They used their own forces to go out and collect the locations of all their valves, their meters, and their fire hydrants, and once that was collected, then it's downloaded into our, onto our servers, and we were able to generate a good base map of their utilities over there. They also did manholes for the sewer side. So, sewer's a little easier, if you will, than water. You collect the manhole locations, and kind of draw, connect knots, on water, it's not quite as simple, but in that particular case, we let them have our unit, they collected the data that was available above ground, the valves, meters, and hydrants, and then they actually came into our office, the guys that had the institutional knowledge, came into our office, we wrote the map up on the screen just like this, we went through it street by street, and they helped us get the water lines drawn in there where they needed to be, so that was one way that we were able to work with one of our good clients to generate a base map toward the G I S of the water system.
I'm gonna stick in my mouth again, sorry. One of the other things I've been working with the G I S people to develop is an accident tool for the water line, that you can click on a water line, tell it, say there's a water line break, it will pop up a work order that tells you what valves you need to shut to isolate that line, and it will generate the list of what services are gonna be without water during the time that water line has been broken, or you're doing maintenance on it. And then when you complete the work order, it reminds you to open, reopen the valves. That can be really useful for when you have a system with as many lines of various ages you have, to be able to notify those people in a hurry.
We also have a camera truck, we can do pipe jetting, we have the camel jet that we can bring in, clean sewer lines out, sewer, storm sewer, whatnot, and go in and do some visual inspection of those lines, so that is another one of the services that we, up until January one of this year, we had in-house. When we needed that service, we had to go outside of the company and find a sub, but now, we have that in-house with Hurt and Profit, so that's another very useful tool when you're looking at designing and thinking about upgrades to your collection system. We have a geotechnical engineering department, and we recently invested quite a bit of money in a new track mount and drill rig, so those guys are out in the field most days doing their bore holes, and getting the information that you need when geotechnical services are appropriate, so again, that's something that, you need that, you call Matt, he can coordinate that all right with, one-stop shop. Material testing, same way, once your project goes to construction, or if you have an in-house project that you'd like to have some material testing done, done on, we have a whole group of guys, and that's all they do every day is material testing, so here are some of the, listed out some of the testing capabilities that we do have. Construction inspections, we have two full-time utility inspectors. Now, some clients elect to do this with their own staff. We have some clients that would rather dedicate one of their own staff while the construction project's going on to do that, but if that's not something you're interested in, we have two full-time utility inspectors that we can assign to your project, and be on-site every day to witness the work being done, documented, to meet the funding agency or the town's requirements. So that pretty much concludes our slideshow, but I would like to say that we strive to be a firm that's accessible, and we try to let you know by the responsiveness that we have, that we care about your projects, and Matt's done work here in the town before, and I feel sure that his responsiveness has reflected that, and we would really appreciate the opportunity to be able to continue that. So I'd like to see if anyone has any questions, specific projects that we can answer.
Are you familiar with our town's water system already? Yes. We have worked on both projects where we installed the water tank back in two thousand and two, and the water treatment plant work that was done in two thousand and two. We started in two thousand and two, frankly.
Yeah, the construction, as I said, but...
Yeah.
Started the planning, I guess, back in two thousand and two.
Yeah.
Who's your president now?
The president of the company is, I believe, Beth Johnson.
Yeah, Beth Johnson.
And he's based out of the Lynchburg office.
Yes.
Well, I guess you got a nice big golf with, every year, but they're probably retired by now.
Was it Charlie Hurt, or, I don't remember what the other?
Was he out of the Lynchburg office, or the Blacksburg?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I thought he was up closer to Washington. Maybe he was.
Yeah, I'm not sure who that would be.
There are some people there that are still in the Lynchburg office that have been there for thirty years.
Hey, yes.
Chances are they might still be there, and to give them a call, they might still be up for golf.
We have, of course, I think you all know our company, is there any specific questions that you would like to ask, because that's more of your lines?
Yeah, exactly.
I had one question, I probably saw it on that slide, and I was probably reading other stuff. You guys have electrical engineers in-house?
That's one of the few things we don't have in-house, but we've worked with both Masters Engineering out of Lynchburg for many years, and we also work with Sturgill Engineering out of Lexington, North Carolina, both have a lot of experience in doing evaluations and upgrades of water treatment, wastewater treatment, et cetera.
It was watt miles, I think, last time, didn't it?
Yep, it's still watt.
Okay. I just wondered.
He's still kicking around, he doesn't know what to do if he were to retire.
I'd say he's been around forever.
Yeah.
That was, that was the main question I had.
Yep.
I'm just interested in a three D scanner, is that sort of like, I'm familiar with a Leica scanner, is it something like that?
It is.
I've had a little bit of experience working with their engine products, that's just a need, because of the need for water.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It's very useful. C S X in Norfolk and Southern really loved it for scanning the inside of the tunnels, because you can set it up, scan it really quick, especially when they're doing some of the tunnel widening, it can detect whether or not they widened it within an inch, or what the height is where they're talking about the double stack corridors along the Heartland corridor projects and things like that. It's an amazing technology that's come out in the last ten, ten, fifteen years.
And for pump station and water treatment plant work, it gets you right down to the flange of the pipe, so if you had to go in there and measure all of that, you can...
It saves an hour to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the reason I know is that there's a detective, and we'll three D scan crime scenes, so you can save a lot of measuring.
Yeah.
You really don't need to do baseline work anymore, that takes hours and hours of work.
We've, we've had a couple of certified agents that have hired us to do accident scenes, so, yeah.
That's an amazing tool.
Yeah.
You have a question, Joe? My understanding, you all worked on the water treatment plant prior to, is that?
Yes.
My understanding, so you all had the project beforehand, and when we started?
We worked on the last significant upgrade to the plant, which was done in the two... We started in two thousand and finished construction about two thousand and five, two thousand and seven.
Yeah, two thousand and seven.
And I did an evaluation of the plant with Todd, what would be required, we expanded the plant to two million gallons per day, finished it up last year, I believe.
I guess there's only one question, did they do a good job?
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I need here. Just wanted to make sure.
That's a kind of question we like.
Yeah, maybe you have to ask the subtle stuff. It seems like you have a lot of experience, especially when, you know, Parishburg, it's around the same numbers, what, Roman spins, so, you know, I mean, definitely got all the tools and equipment.
I generally work on water treatment systems from everything as small, twenty gallons a minute, to four and a half million gallons a day. That seems to be the general gist of this area's southwest area.
I got another question. Because when you go, when you go apply for jobs and everything, there's references, is there anybody we can call and reference and ask them how they're, how they like your project and stuff?
Yeah, we do this, and I believe, believe we had that in the, in the initial proposal of clients that you would be perfectly happy to talk to.
I guess that's a question for you, Mike, if you want to call them, yeah, just make sure, they seem pretty legit, so...
Yeah. Would you like us to email you a list of references?
I have a R P that you had previously sent.
I might with Todd.
Sure. I mean, I...
It seems like you're totally self-sufficient.
Yeah.
You don't have to sub out a lot of stuff.
Like I said, the only, the only part that we have to sub out is really, is electrical, and that because it's such a niche.
Well, you should get some interns from tech to help you with that, I mean, you've got one of the best engineering departments in the nation.
Yeah, we, I've debated it at times, there have been times when I really wanted to have a Leica engineer on staff, that way I don't have to sub out every day, but the advantage of having, I can get somebody who has forty years of experience, watt miles, and have him come, and he worked on the last project for us. So he's familiar, in this case, he's familiar with the water treatment plant, and he can step in and just work on it, and he also has the advantage of, because of what he does, he can bring years' experience in many locations.
You need someone, a new, fresh, young guy in there, follow him around.
Actually, we have another study right now.
Work for you guys, and you're like, oh, this is... Work for you guys and you're like, oh, this is.
That is a undergrad. Hello, that's a good thing. But yeah, you've got an understudy now.
Question's not related to this. I'm just curious if Gary'd finally give it up for time.
Gary, we joke about it, works about 40 hours a year.
Oh, really?
I have about two or three clients that he actually still talks to. Mostly, most of them are Floyd because he still lives in the town of Floyd.
I was curious, I hadn't heard from him in a while.
Yeah, he's pretty much retired.
John, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip, bye.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I'll go ahead and handle that.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, appreciate it. John, we're ready. If you'd like to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I got the handout, I'd like to give it to you. Instead of, I wanted to give you something to actually look at and fill out the references to me, too. And I've got everything on the phone, probably way here in the market.
My good's all right over here, though.
Give you one, too, Matt, if you'd like.
Everybody has a need. I'm just gonna hack it, I don't know if you can get all of the best ones, please. AT&amp;T server.
I've got Verona's model, too.
I love Verona's model, I'm back there. I've got AT&amp;T. You been acting up on it? Yeah. Well, it says on four bar, it takes three hours to load it. It's gonna be more expensive if you've got your eyes on it than I do. But I have the four, I'm gonna say.
Okay. First of all, Mayor, thank you and counsel for our particular kind of life for you. Perhaps our firm can give our appreciation for the project. I'm a senior project manager, I have Brian Good, who is a process engineer with Thompson and Witten. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on those. I'd rather talk about your project. We've been in business over 60 years, have an office in Tasman. We have anywhere from 90 to 112 weeks of fluctuation, construction season. I've had the pleasure of past experience working with the mayor, Mr. Jones, and also my friends from other projects for the town. And again, I'd like to concentrate now, early, on your project to make sure we all feel that we have a good comprehension of what we want to get accomplished and look at. I've been doing this for 33 years. Traveled for seven years here. Resigned in '84, worked for Thompson and Witten. And since then have grown from resident project representative up to associate senior project manager. I've been touched by every water utility project you can think of and everything good and everything bad that happened during those 33 years, the same class. Until you work at Polk County, or at Pecan County, you don't know what it's like to work on projects. But I do want to share with you, the handout, and look at the second page. I have had the opportunity to put our project team together and I brought to the table the best we got, I think. If you look at that, that's a combined of 362 years of experience that we're bringing to the table for the town for this project. Greg Hurst is executive vice president, in line to be president next May, April or May. And he's from Richland, he's a Taffet County agent. Brian has got 19-plus years in the process, water treatment process project. I do want to mention Dave Dawson. I don't know if y'all know Dr. Dawson. I know Mike knows him. He's on our team. Dave is real good with rates, has done a lot of rate evaluations and studies for clients over a period of years and looking at things. Now, Dave also used to be the executive director of Washington County Public Service Authority, so he sat on the other side before where you guys sit, which is a great input to have when you're looking at this, so he's sensitive to that side, too. He's there to help with Mike, needs assistance. Jim Bonham and Dave Levens in our Chillicothe office, that's 89 years of experience in electrical, mechanical, electrical. That's hard to beat. Dave does a lot of work at the Norton, Virginia, for a lot of the companies I've worked with. And then Dave Carrier, Dave is a Taffet County agent also, as well as my assistant. Next page, again, we have a local office in Tasman, on Main Street, been there since 1984. We're about 25 miles from the town. We can be here in 20 minutes, a little less if I don't run across the former, but we believe in a lot of meetings when we can during the design process, during the construction process. We're not ones that just take something, go do it, finish it, and come back with the end product. We want to have periodic progress meetings with Mike and the staff and with Todd to make sure we're still on the same sheet of music. Each time we do that, we also look at the budget, very conscious of the budget, want to make sure we stay within it. Even during construction, we like to do that, progress meetings. And also, we're close enough, if you want to, with Mike and the council, we can attend your council meetings as we get started and give you updates on that as we go. Page four, talk about our project management. Yours is different than a lot of the other firms. A lot of other firms have, their project manager is also their design supervisor and they're doing a dual role, or sometimes a triple role. I'm not an engineer. I've heard and seen a lot over 33 years, I've learned a lot, but I'm not an engineer. My goal is to keep it in budget and keep it on schedule. I don't know what you manage if you don't have a budget, you don't have a schedule. And that's what my main role is. His role is through the engineering and keep the regulatory people satisfied. I've been doing it again for 33 years. I've been more than glad, I've got a longstanding client base I've worked for, I've been blessed with, a big guy if you'd have called any of them. And I guess one of the best compliments I got was one of my former clients, or still a client, when somebody asked him, what is about Rick that you like? And he said, well, when he gives his report, he seems like a part of our staff. He's a department head, given us a report we can have on our best interest of the project. And that's what my goal is, that we listen to you. We genuinely listen to you. We met with Todd, this is your project and we want to listen and do what you're saying as long as we keep it in the realm of the budget and in the realm of the regulatory side. Over the years, I've learned a few things, and we have all learned a few things, to help with cost control methods. I know Mike has probably done some of this. We've talked about, and toward the end is force account projects. You have a very, very qualified staff, very high competent staff, that can do it. And Todd and him can do a lot of this work in-house if they have time and could really save anywhere from 30 to 40 percent probably of what conventional costs them, but if it can do it. We've done a lot of work with that on past clients and with the health department funding. I learned a long time ago, beginning working in Polk County, Buck County, and some of those, if we don't go out and help our clients find financing and attract the funding, you don't have a project. You don't have that type of money sitting around in your conference to do this. So you've got to go help find that financing to bring to the table to help these projects for you. And in doing that, you need to take and look at ways to help save money. Brian, if you would, if you'd share with, this is an actual ongoing project I have that I do. And this is what I call a project status report. Once you hit the project funding to get it going, that gives you a detailed breakdown of where every single dollar is being spent and appropriated to that project. So every month, we update that to you guys and give it to mine. And you can know where exactly you stand in regards to the budget. And I know you folks got jobs and come in here every once in a while and can't keep up with that. That's my job. My job is to make sure we keep you informed and keep you updated. We also know time is money, schedules. The health department's going to pick you on the schedule with their financing because if we don't get it done in our timeframe, I mentioned, I think, before, we tell EPA start checking the money, wanting money back. Direct purchase of equipment, there may be something that if you choose to buy some of these pumps directly, one thing, saves your sales tax. If you buy it, you don't pay sales tax. Contractor buys it, he has to pay sales tax. So, you know, but you want to look at that as far as coordination with the town frame and stuff like that. We have done it. We've actually bought a whole plant, had a plant buy a whole water membrane filtration plant, had it and bought it and then went out to contractors to put it together, add alternates. You've got internal piping, you might want to have all the piping done and pumps, but don't want to have money to replace the valves and fittings. Well, let's put the valves and fittings in the contract, bid it while we're bidding a big job and see what kind of money we get, the bid we get. And if we can't afford it, we don't do it. If we do at a real attractive price, you might want to look at it. So those are the type of things you put in your contract documents. Scale and telemetry, you got to have that today, y'all got it. That's the name of the game in operations in the water industry. And then again, the last thing I said is familiarity with the force cap procedures with the health department. They're probably the best of all fund agencies to work with is force cap. I think they actually let you get reimbursed with, I think, the equipment and manpower and labor. Some of them won't let you quickly reimburse and then if you do, you have to follow VDOT rental rates that are real low. But they're one of the best the health department has to work with. Page five, I have been blessed, and we've been blessed to have worked for the town. I don't know, I think you know, we started off with the town, I talked to Mike some time back. We have contractors, the Department of Health, that we, they have us do small jobs for clients that they actually pay. And I talked to them and asked them if we could do an asset management capital improvement plan for the town. They agreed to and they paid for that and we did that study. I want to commend again, this town, you've got some old pipes and old systems, but I tell you what, folks, you've got some good, good stuff in the ground. And the basis is still running and that comes from purely good maintenance and oversight on behalf of your staff. But in doing that study, we've got your system, we got it to hydraulics, Mike and I talked about this before. Your hydraulics probably need to be updated a little bit and your mapping may need to be updated a little bit. That might be a part of the scope of this work if you wanted, but the health department loves to have that stuff done and up on file for you guys to have. Right 460 water line, we did that design to go out to serve Leatherwood several years ago, if you remember, Mayor. ENS stormwater reviews, we used to do that, I don't know if we still do that now, except for the town now. Stadium Drive realignment, Tim Owens designed that. High Street, Tim's working on that. Of course, it's a beautiful facility we set in, we were blessed to have this. And then the new stadium pre-construction package, that was a toughie, but we want to be fair and honest about it. And then the Jack Asbury Park and Farmers Market, we had it, we're blessed to do some work on that for you. Page six, our experience on this, and I mentioned this before, after doing that asset management capital improvement plan, it already had a preliminary engine in before, done a couple years ago by Anderson and Sussex, who I think that Hurt the Profit bought then. And that was in place, so what we want to do is use that in conjunction with, I mean, the water line upgrade of one on two. I went ahead and met with the health department, assistant director, regional director, Brian Blankenship, and asked if we could use that PDR and knowing that it may have to have some updates and some modifications made. And he agreed to it to get us eligible to even get the applications made. So what we're saying is, we're very familiar, mind and head on, and what's in there and changes that might want to be made to do versus what was in there and add a few things that was in there. Again, we helped get the financing, I think it's a very attractive financing package and offer to the town. There's a meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock in Abington to talk about that further. And I know the options still out there on how you want to look as far as your rates are concerned and which option you might take. Page seven, basically, those are just the letters that have been submitted to the town in regards to the funding from the health department. You guys, I know y'all seemed to have talked about it about months or so ago, the different options to have to look at. And page eight, it gets into the technical side. I'm gonna let Brian talk about some of these issues from the technical side.
Thank you, Ray. I'm Brian, Hugh, Rick introduced me a little bit earlier. I'm a design engineer at BE. I will be the primary designer on your project, should be fortunate enough to have you choose us. And I'm just gonna go over some of the upgrades at the plant, that are part of this project to convey to you that, you know, we didn't do the PDR for this project, but we've done our homework and we know what the scope is. Todd was generous enough to carve out the morning for me to come, go through the plant and walk through what needed to be worked on. And these aren't any in particular order, but on page eight, show the mechanical screen, our existing manual screen. You know, this is where the river water comes into your facility. It's the first treatment process, so to speak. Screens, you know, are working okay, but it's not something that you want to keep if you can afford to replace it. When you get storms, you're going to get all kinds of leaves and all kinds of debris that come into that box and a man's got to go out there and physically rake it. Not only the time can be a problem, but, you know, there's also the potential for somebody to get hurt following the box, something like that. Mechanical screening will serve two functions. It'll, of course, bring the debris out of the box, but another function is that it will prevent the screens from getting blinded, which is a possibility with the manual screen. I know Todd has looked at, wanted to look at some other options as far as what kind of screening is going to be used. There was one that was outlined in the PDR, but I think he's already looked at that. Be happy to go through some of those options with him if we do get the job. The next item is the backwash pump, it's going to be replaced. I believe you're existing, I believe this is about 60 years old, this existing pump, which is kind of amazing in and of itself because mechanical equipment, you really don't expect it to last more than 20 or 25 years. So it's impressive that they've been able to maintain it because you've been in use. It is your only backwash pump. If it goes down, you're in trouble, so that's slated to be replaced. Whether or not the new one goes on the shelf to be installed, if there's a problem with this one, or if we go ahead and install the new one, if this one on the shelf would be something that we could talk about and make sure that Todd would want to have some input on. The next item is a little bit more basic on page nine. That's the handrails around your sedentation bases. Right now, you've got, I guess, steel. Todd and his crew have tried to rehab those. They've had a lot of corrosion on them. They sanded them down and tried to paint it, but it just doesn't stay. So they're going to be replaced. There's also perhaps a little bit of an OSHA issue there, there's some dog. So all those would be replaced with aluminum railing, which will not corrode. Only issue there would be to make sure that they get installed properly. If they're installed properly such that the aluminum doesn't physically touch the concrete, those will be, they'll look like they're new 20 years from now. The next item is the sludge collection system improvements. This is in your sedentation bases. You've got two sedentation bases. Originally, the clean-out job on both of those was manual, which meant drain the basin, trying to spray the solids that were collected to the drain, probably having to push it, shuttle it, or push it to the drain. But you've replaced, you've got a passive pipe system in one of those, which is nice. It's not perfect, as Todd will know, but it's a good system. It's not perfect, as Todd will know, well knows, uh, but it's a, it's a good system in that you don't have, um, mechanical parts and gearing below the water surface. Uh, there's another standard type of sludge collection system, maybe like a chain flight system, um, those, those can develop problems. So the idea would be to duplicate this and put it into your other, your other basin. Um, on page ten, we are gonna look at replacing one of your finished water pumps. Um, two, you've got three, um, of which two, I believe, have to operate in order to provide full plant capacity. Two of those were replaced in two thousand and eight, so this would replace the oldest one. Also notice that there are some fittings that go into the discharge head, which is the larger blue pipe on the right side of the picture. They were custom fabricated, uh, Todd has some problems with those, wants to replace those. Those might go onto a, to an adder item, uh, like Rick was talking about, along with, uh, both of the valves on the discharge side of each one of these pumps. There's a check valve and a gate valve, um, that I, that I think he would like to get replaced. We don't have pictured your raw water meter replacement, uh, it's just, it's, it's an old meter, um, it's been there for quite a while, I need it to be replaced. Not, not too much to discuss there. Um, item number six brings up, uh, something that I skipped over before, didn't mention. You will be changing from rapid rate to high rate filtration as part of this project to increase your plant capacity from one and a half to potentially two million gallons per day. Um, in order to do that, you need to add instrumentation to monitor the process from, throughout the entire plant, from raw water all the way to finished water. So, uh, we would be adding raw turbidometers and applied turbidometers after each sedimentation basin. Those are just measures of particulates in the water, so as you go through the plant, you know, you want that number to go down quickly at a time. Um, you'll also be adding P H meters, there's three P H meters, and then a stream and current monitor, uh, which is not a, not a cheap item, but it's required by the health department to monitor your high rate filtration. Uh, it, it monitors your coagulation process, and a good operator like Todd can use that to help, uh, optimize the, the coagulation process and to hopefully reduce costs, uh, using a little bit less coagulant. Um, those instruments, looking at page eleven now, look, those instruments will have to be tied into your existing SCADA system. Um, your H M I, your human machine interface, which is what, when he sits down at the computer, is the software that he's looking at, is, is the ignition software, which has been something that's been, been, uh, coming more prevalent in the last ten years or so. Like, I guess that's about the time that you, you got this software.
Two thousand and twelve, I think.
Was it, okay, it was after the upgrade.
Yeah.
But it's nice in that it's, it's very upgradable, uh, as far as how many data points it can read. You don't have to pay additional, uh, money licensing fee for that. Um, but if we will need to hook all those instruments into your, your SCADA system, which is a very important part of your plant, as Rick had mentioned earlier. Uh, I believe Todd has access from his cell phone, I believe you're the only one who has access to that. But you, you can see the, uh, the alarms, and he doesn't have to be on site to see if there's a problem. And we definitely wanna get the instruments added in to your SCADA system. Another big item I know, uh, for Todd especially, and, and really has been a V D H priority over the past ten or fifteen years, is this, uh, number eight is the, the backup generator. Um, you know, if your water plant is a critical facility, uh, V D H first looked at trying to mandate backup generators. They sent some feelers out and trying to get some cost and realized that they're just, a blanket mandate out there without funding wasn't worth it. So they are providing the funding for that and trying to push it in. And this would be the generator that would, that would back up your plant so that it could actually function. It wouldn't be a lights and, and heat generator, I mean, it would actually operate over toxic water systems. I know we're short on time, I'll try to finish up quickly. Uh, number nine, we'd be adding three raw water wells that you already have drilled into your system, they're just not connected and permitted, so we would be, we would be adding those. Uh, all three of those wells are in close to the plant, one is on the plant site, one is at the park next door, and one's just down the road at the Pempo facility. Number ten is, is an item that might be considered for force account work, and it's upgrading the, the four inch water line, we said, we were taking off one and two, going towards Falls Mill from four and eight, in order to be able to, uh, direct additional water to Falls Mill and Polkahomas areas in the future, so that we sell down the water. And the last, and we've got a picture of that, is the, the roof replacement. I know Todd's been dealing with issues for that, with that over the past several years, and it made him do it when he came, and, uh, it's, it's not a cheap thing, but it needs to be done, it's, it's, they have to mix opportunities anyway. And that's really all that I have, I think Rick's gonna wrap, wraps up.
Okay, one of the things, an idea like Brian, I've got this one, I have a little faster. The two million gallon day plants you wanna move to, I'm sure Mike and him has told you, you might wanna get a two million gallon day in place, which may only wanna permit for one point nine and five, because it gets into different operation types. Not no guarantee you have, you have available when you need it. The last couple of sheets I have is a schedule, that schedule is in the application, the funding application that the health department has. I think you need to stay online as close to that as possible to keep the funding agency happy. And then the last sheet I have is, is why I'm comfortable with, uh, the Penner interview that Fred found in front of us, and, uh, I, I don't mean this disrespecting, this is pretty cut and dried project, pumps, motors, uh, things that you can look at. We feel that we know that system probably, that's relevant by now to go through asset management plan and capital improvement plan. And that right there gives us a good comfort feel for your overall system. We have successfully worked with the health department on numerous projects, I had personal funding from my clients. Again, I, I just know for a fact, clients I've interviewed just don't have that type of money to sit around and do these, but we're happy to try to get it. We understand fully what you mean with what you wanna get done, thank Todd again, and Mike, and the staff that take the time to do it. We've had a long-term relationship with the town in past projects, uh, and really enjoy working with the town, the town's a, a great client. And then, of course, we just have the, the local, we just take the place of the backhoe, to be honest with you. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, I know you've got counsel starting, I'd take the time to be glad to address anything you may have.
Is there any questions, so maybe we, maybe come back later on with S V R and that?
Yes, sir.
You want us to stay tonight, or you want us to come back later?
Is there any questions, Todd, you may have?
No.
Uh, John, is there any major questions?
I like, I like what they talk about the force base stuff, that's what we did, the same one there. That can always pay for this whole project, I agree, great.
Yes, I, I tell you, uh, the town Bluefield has that much, they really do. Some of it's out beyond our control, also hasn't worked, but they're, I'll take that.
Thank you very much for coming.